This is the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. It's Wednesday, January 22nd. And we will call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll. Agnes Goulubanya, not here. Ed Ward.
Present.
Iris Kislin.
Here.
Kevin McNeil.
Here.
NBC.
Present.
Tom Lennon.
Present.
Mayor Kramer, not here.
But he said 5:45, so.
Mick Champa, that's me, I'm here. And also January Adams is here with us, our director. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. And I will note now that Mayor Kramer is also with us.
Get in there, Mayor.
The first item of business is nomination and election of officers. January, I'd like to turn this over to you.
Okay. Are there any nominations for the office of President?
I nominate Nick.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
It's not.
You have to ask for other nominations.
Yes.
Oh. So he seconds it and then I ask for other nominations?
I don't think a second is needed.
No. Second isn't required, but it is allowed. So now that you have one nomination, you have to ask are there any other nominations?
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of President?
Hearing none, motion to close nominations.
Hearing none, motion to close nominations.
Don't move.
All in favor of Nick as President?
You have to vote to close.
Yeah. You got to close a nomination.
Those in favor of closing.
Close in favor of closing? Anybody not in favor of closing? So the nominations for President are closed. Now we vote.
Other nominations? You can vote by acclamation, you don't have to do a ballot. You don't have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Because there's only one person.
Oh, okay. Congratulations.
So all in favor.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You're second. I thank you, I accept the nomination.
I accept the nomination and I thank you.
So you did the rest.
For Secretary, is there a nomination for the office of Secretary? I will nominate Iris Kislin.
He gave it to you back. I'm just, I'm outside.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Seeing none? Is there a motion to close nominations for the office of Secretary?
Some more.
Is there a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
The nomination for Secretary is closed. And I will note that Agnes Goulubanya is now with us.
Yes, she is.
So those in favor of electing Iris Kislin for Secretary signify by raising their hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Iris, congratulations. By acclamation, you are elected. And the other office we have is a treasurer and vice president, vice president and treasurer. One office held by, two offices held by one person. Are there any nominations for this?
Vice President. If you want to be Vice President, as Vice President.
I'm sorry.
You're nominating yourself?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
NBC is nominated for Vice President.
Hey, so ask him.
Is there a second?
Did I give my cash out yet?
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
So close.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Two but four, there's not one.
Okay. Those in favor of electing NBC as our Vice President and Treasurer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment. No public comment at the moment?
No.
We will close the, we will close the first part of public comment. And go on to discussion of the minutes from the December. Is there any discussion? I'm sure you've all read them. Seeing no discussion, is there a motion to accept the minutes from the December 11th meeting?
Aye.
As presented? There's a second?
Second.
Those in favor? The minutes are accepted. Oh, you're right. Okay. And January, would you like to go into your reports?
Do the financial, do the financial first.
Okay.
At this point in the year, we should have spent about 50% of the budget. Which is pretty much the case.
I did a few assumptions and figured that if we keep on this rate, we will have a small surplus of about $200,000 at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. I'm writing that down to see if you're right. I do tend to spend more money in the second half of the year than the first.
I know that. I figured that.
We'll have more to come.
Are there any comments on the, on the financial statements that have been better in that?
Yeah, I have a couple. Because I did notice we had the 50% mark. The telephone at the Franklin Township Library is at 63%. Is that?
At the branch?
Yeah, at the branch.
Yeah.
Correct. I noticed that. That was a red flag. It just stood out.
Yeah. I will say that that's my error. I didn't estimate correctly how much it was going to be. I'll fix it for next year.
Got it.
Is this much higher than last year's?
I don't know. I'd have to look. I'd have to look. It shouldn't be. I think it was just maybe a mistaken measurement.
Yeah, everything else is about 50. Except insurance at the, do we pay that in advance?
Well, those bills come.
It's annual.
Yeah, they don't come every week.
So that means we're kind of, we're kind of under budget. That means if we have this. It's annual.
What I tend to do is look at the largest items, like salary and work.
Oh, okay.
And they're usually right.
Couple more coming in.
Okay.
They're usually right to the percentage that they should be. Because they're, they recur.
Same thing with maintenance, right? Is that 92%?
Yeah, that's the service contract on the.
Air condition.
Or the catalog.
Okay. So that's just once a year?
That's once a year.
Okay. These reports should be filed for audit.
Nice job.
And we'll hear of your.
Programs.
Program report.
Okay, so we had 1,372 people at 96 programs. And programs of note were the radio play of a Christmas carol. And the New Brunswick Jazz Project's musical tribute to James P. Johnson. And the Holiday Cheer Music Show. Those were the most outstanding programs of the past month. And then we started a new feature, recalling it Throwback Thursday movie series. And we started that the day after Christmas with A Christmas Story. And as I think I've mentioned before, the teen reading program started in December because they wanted it to coincide with their break. But the children's and the adult started a couple of days ago, on the 15th, or a week ago, on the 15th.
Okay.
I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go, January, go.
I can't even pause for breath. We've started a new, we've all, we've done this for several years. We do one-on-one computer sessions where people can, if they have problems with their computers or with their phones, or they come in and we give them one-on-one tutoring. And we've increased that. So now, in January, there were 10 slots. Because it's very popular.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's good.
And then the sad news is Grounds for Sculpture, which is our most popular museum pass program, is going to discontinue it. So our passes expire in August. So after that, no more Grounds for Sculpture passes. And we're trying to find something else that people like just as much.
Do they say why?
I would imagine they're losing too much business from it. Because we're not the only library that does it. That's what I would guess.
And how were they doled out to us? I mean, did we just get, we could give out as many passes as we chose? Or did we have a finite number of them?
Like with Grounds for Sculpture, we buy four. And then people can, on the computer, sign up. And you can only, you can only have a pass, I think it was months and months. And the pass is good for, I forget, Grounds for Sculpture might be for four people. And then those four people will go for free.
Right. So this is a foregone conclusion? It's not like we could say, well, listen, can we reduce the, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I then, I then took that from that program because I used it to go to see the sculptures.
Yeah.
With some of my, the other senior groups.
People really liked it.
Oh, yeah.
They liked it. Well, maybe they'll reconsider.
January, when I read this, I made notes. It said, we should send a letter to Grounds for Sculpture thanking them for their participation with us in the past, but a little bit of a zinger about we're very unhappy that it's being discontinued. And if there are any changes, please let us know. Is there any secretary that might want to write such a letter?
Can you look?
I think it would be nice to make them and yet nudge them a little politely as well.
You just spoke about, where's that referenced here? I'm sorry.
The second page.
Adult Services.
Page three.
Oh, hang on.
And then one more, and then one more thing I wanted to tell you about. An example of all the different types of things we do for patrons here besides loan books is at the branch, we had a patron who came in and he was trying to submit documents and pictures to immigration. And he got help with scanning and uploading his materials and navigating the site. And then we had another patient who came in who was trying to recover music that he had been saved, that he had saved to his old phone. And staff was able to help him.
January, would you later give me, is there a contract that you have?
And that's it. Now I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, January.
For what?
Well, just under Adult Services, I, I, I don't want it to be new business. Sorry, I'm sorry. Wrong place. I'll wait.
Okay.
A comment on Director's report? Thank you for the article. The great and powerful school board, one with very an aliveness.
Did you like it?
From a library media specialist's point of view. I didn't realize the numbers, you know, up to $1 million in some campaigns. And so, yeah, this is from a different point of view with media specialists and librarians. I know they're the first ones to cut from the school budget.
Yes.
And Franklin, we continue, we're pretty blessed because almost all of our schools have a full-time media specialist, except a couple of elementary schools share.
Yeah.
And we're still fighting or advocating to get one media specialist at every building. Because they do more than just check out.
Yes, they do.
Yes. And you have a way to constantly advocate towards the relationship between township libraries.
Yeah, she's the person mentioned here with the working with the young adult.
Yes.
Not the young adult, the youth services.
Yeah. So kudos to her.
And that was, I didn't see that.
I didn't send that to everybody. I only thought Ed would be interested, so I apologize.
I just thought I was.
Not getting in trouble.
No, that's fine.
You're the only one.
It's not school boards.
No, no, no.
You're the only one.
Thank you, January.
I call for discrimination.
At this point, there is no President's report. But I'd like to ask for any correspondence or communication? Is there any?
So we have the article, the other article.
Yeah, that was.
Data to the rescue. Yes, about the never-ending fight with digital products. And the formation of that panorama project. That what they're trying to do is gather enough data to show that eBooks actually promote the sale of other products. So it doesn't sound like it's going too well, but they're trying.
Yeah.
I wanted to, on behalf of Somerset Run Women's Club, thank the library and that came and spoke last month. She, she was very informative and very.
That's Carrie, right?
Yeah.
Is there any other correspondence? Is there any old business to be worked over? Is there any new business?
This goes, I'd like to put something on the table, see if there's interest or if we're allowed to do this. I was just called upon today to arrange some speakers. From time to time, we have a number of outreaches at the hospital, at both hospitals. I'm just more aware of the ones on the New Brunswick campus since we're very close there. And I was arranging for a speaker, a cardiologist who spoke Spanish, to speak to health wellness and how it pertains and how important it is to watch your diabetes in order to maintain heart health. These are free programs. And I just realized, there's so many free programs that we have. Everything from ALS to Parkinson's disease to different disease, how to maintain your own health. Is that something we would consider if I was to bring a calendar here that we could include it? Because most people wouldn't know about these programs, which are free.
Oh, you want to just let people know about them?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure. Sure. Sure.
Because you wouldn't know unless you were recently admitted to the hospital and then you get on a mailing list or, or there's things in the hallways and such. But we have a sizable Spanish-speaking population here in town. And here, someone is speaking to them in their first language, keeping them healthy, keeping them well, and keeping them out of the hospital. What do you think, Mayor?
I think it's an excellent idea.
And if you say, for me to be most politically correct, I could do it from the two campuses. That would be both Somerset, because we do have, at Somerset Hospital, we do have people that are reaching out that way. So, but it would take for me to reach out to them. I'm sure they'd be happy to supply their, they have a number of free programs. But it's just easier for me to get it. If so, if it was of interest, I will get that, collect and forward it to you so we can incorporate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good deal.
Can you, I met a young woman when I was having radiation a couple of weeks ago, who was there with her grandmother. They, neither one spoke anything. And in my limited Spanish, I wanted to, I said to her, do you want to learn how to speak English? And she said, yes.
Sure.
Do you know where to go? No. So she, I gave her my phone, she put her phone number in, I gave me a phone number, and I will find out now, do we have a literacy program here?
Yes.
Oh, but she lives in New Brunswick, so I have to then contact the New Brunswick library.
Yeah, she might be better off going to New Brunswick.
Yeah, she lives in New Brunswick.
Yeah. I'm sure they, I'm sure New Brunswick has one.
Yeah, they have that.
Hospital by cat.
Yeah. Yeah. That's closer for her to go to New Brunswick. I'm sure they, I'm sure they would have one.
So other new business. So it's come to my attention that when applying to colleges, an important thing is what community serves them.
Yeah.
Do we have community, do we have volunteer opportunities?
Yes, in the children's area, yes.
And we, we advertise them?
Yes.
Do we advertise them to the school?
To the high schools, I guess that would be the.
We must, because the kids come in, they, they put in applications to do it. So the schools must know about it.
Yeah. They know what.
They serve six weeks rotations. We do a few at a time. And then when that's up, then we keep, it's a constant turnover.
Good. That's good.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
Executive?
I guess so.
Not necessarily executive, I don't. January, I think you have some new business that could be done in open session.
Okay, as you know, the library's going to apply for a grant to offset some of the costs of the Southern Branch that we want to build. And the grant application has become public. It came out January 6th. The deadline is April 6th. I've been in contact with the architect. Most of the grant is prepared by the architect. And he has sent me a proposal that we would be working together on it. And he has estimated that it would be 70 hours of his time. And he was very organized and gave me a question-by-question on the grant, breakdown of who's going to do what, and that sort of thing. And for that, he wants $7,500. And I can pass it around, I have copies.
So does he tell you how many hours?
Seven.
Seven. A little over $100. What's the amount of the grant?
It could be as much as a million. It's 50% of the cost of the building.
Good.
And if the building is $2 million, this would be a million.
Well, it's.
If.
It's up to $250 per square foot. So the estimated cost of our building is what, $450 a square foot? So presumably, it could be even a little bit more than half. But there's a lot of competition.
Yeah, there's a lot of competition.
Yeah, I was saying, like, whether the, like, whether you need it just to get the grant, like, would, you know, just for the new.
They want, this is a very, I think this is an owner's grant. I've done grants before, and this one's particularly, it's almost like they don't want you to get it, to be honest with you. They want an awful lot of.
And what I learned today.
Or state or?
To state.
States, yeah.
What I learned today is that the borough of Wachung is also applying for a grant for a building maybe a little more than twice the size of the one we're looking to build. And the same architect is doing theirs, so they're probably going to do one shot through and answer all the questions for both people.
It's, the total is $125 million. They've split it in half, so this, they're calling it winter cycle, winter 2020 cycle. So this time, it's 87 million. I don't know if there will be a second cycle. I don't know.
That's so good.
It's under New Jersey State Library?
Yeah, and Thomas Edison. And my personal, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say public.
I think what we're looking here for is a motion to approve the expenditure.
Let me ask you one more question. What are the odds?
I was just going to ask the same thing.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
I mean, it's, of, in the past years in the state of New Jersey, one in five people that applied received a grant. One in 1,000, one in 100 have received, from applicants versus issuance.
I don't know. I don't know.
What's the architect's track record?
Of getting grants?
Yeah.
I can find out.
That's a good, good.
But, but I don't want to delay doing this because we're coming up against the deadline.
So we, there's no other choice?
There's no other choice, really. And part of the work he's going to do for the grant is grant, is work he has to do on the building anyway. And I can't do the grant without him. But I will find out about.
Now, this $7,500, it's my understanding that it would come out of our capital rather than our yearly budget.
Right.
Yes.
And that means?
Come out of the money we put aside for the new building.
How do you feel about it?
How do I feel about it?
Yeah. Director?
There you go.
I like the architect. I think he does a good job. He did a good job at the Southern Branch. I think he did this very promptly for, got the proposal out very promptly. I think it's very well organized. The only other architect that I've worked with was the one that did this building, and that was very hairy, because he procrastinated and was not well organized. So this looks good to me. You know, I don't like spending more money, but I don't.
It doesn't seem, I mean, when you, when you, the pluses, I mean, okay, you lose $7,500. I mean, $7,500 is a lot of money, but.
Nothing compared to.
Nothing to compare to what you could gain. I mean.
Seventy-five into a million, 7,500 into a million, it's 133. There are 564 municipalities in the state. I doubt a fifth of them are building a new library. So.
And we have number seven, we're lucky.
So, yeah, so, you know, so, like, how many people would be going up for this? You don't, we don't.
I don't know. I think it's a lot.
It's a lot of people.
I do think it's a lot, because it's not just building, it's renovation.
That was my question to say, is there a specific fund that the state has for building new grant, you know, the new branches, or is it an old?
It's all, it's all in together.
Yeah, renovation don't cost as much as building.
And those grants wouldn't be as much money as building a new building.
Right.
You know, if it's, if it's something like to become ADA compliant, that wouldn't be as much.
Right. Well, if our building is smaller than Wachung, so we have a better shot.
I don't know, there's a word.
Yeah, I'd rather give less than more.
I also read a statement from Brian O'Jay that the Somerset County Library system was helping Wachung with their proposal. They were helped, they, they said in their statement that they were assisting, I'm sorry, it wasn't specifically Wachung, they were assisting members in getting grants for, so they have some power behind them, you know. But we do too, so.
And one last thing I have to add is, I, I think it's a good idea, and I'll put forth that we should go for it. The only other item I wanted to bring to light is, how many of these items here is he completing anyway? And he's got, he's got a fabulous list here, but.
Anyway, do the project?
50% of them are in his fee that we're paying him to design the building nevertheless. It's just like pulling that paragraph, copy, paste, copy, paste.
That's true.
Yeah, but he did it anyway.
That's true.
Now, it may take 70 hours to do all the things, but which pocket was that out of? I would just say, it'd be a quick question as to, how many items of this are you already performing for us? Or how many are, are you compelled to do under our present contract or engagement?
Well, we don't have that with him yet.
Okay.
Will it save us in that contract?
Pardon?
Will it save us money in that?
Yes.
That's a good way to put it.
Then that's, yes. With our contract, how much will this 75 go for us?
That's a mayor's question. Should be a good one.
Or quite frankly, it's like, I don't know what the scope of his contract would be, would this be absorbed into our signed contract?
Well, would it be proven to say this was a little bit more than we were planning[1773.04] Well, would it be proven to say this was a little bit more than we were planning in our budget? What we were planning to spend is there, and then lead into, well, will this be part of whatever the contract, the other contract?
Very good.
Just so that he knows that we are a little cognizant of the expenditure.
Is this, is that going to slow us down, you think?
No.
Asking these questions?
Maybe five minutes.
When is it, when is it, how long will it take him to
To do this? 70 hours.
Okay. 70, so, but I'm saying, I mean, that's, he's not going to work 70 hours, you know. I mean, that could be over
You can say whatever you want.
There, will he be able to deliver?
Right, because even if it takes 70 hours, that could be over three months.
We
No, he knows the deadline.
There are other factors that may cause some delay as well.
Factors on his part or our part?
Whatever.
In general. So is the county library under the purview of the freeholders?
Yes.
Yes.
So I will be writing the freeholders, indicating that we are going for a grant. We understand that the library is helping with Wachung. And we will appreciate any help, consideration of what Wachung is getting.
Yeah. Why not?
And the freeholders should be, the board will be happy to do that. They would love it if both We're not, we're a little bit in competition with them, but we're more in competition with everyone else. What I might mention is that, no. Somerset County Library System supports libraries to the extent of $90 per person per year. That's a lot of money when you consider that we do very well on $53 per person per year. So, yes, the freeholder, that's a, Mayor, I think that's a very good idea to write such a letter.
Chip Bateman is a senator, is a very good friend of my son-in-law's. And very nice man. And when he was trying to get something through for the, I forgot what it was. He said, you know, "Could you help me with this even though we're on different sides of the aisle?" So would you think it would be out of, if I wrote a letter to him?
Nothing to lose.
What could be hurt? What could
There might be no downsides.
It's going to cost us $0.50 for a stamp.
Is that right? I'll tell him.
Back it down. Why not? So do we need to make a motion to
Yeah, is there a motion to
Time is going to make a motion.
To go to executive?
No, to move forward with the grant.
Oh, to go forward with the grant. Yeah, I made the motion to go forward with the grant.
Is there a second? Okay. Is there any discuss, any further discussion on the grant? We've done this in a little bit, as usual, a little bit backward, but any further discussion? I would just like to say that I'm planning to vote in favor of this motion. Because the little experience I've had with grant applications, they're very tedious. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor of passing this motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
There's nobody else left.
This has passed unanimously.
What is the name of the grant?
Oh.
It's in my office. Do you have it? It's the Library Construction Bond.
State Library Construction Bond Application Process.
State Library Construction Bond.
That's not the whole thing.
If it's a bond, then, then does it depend on, does it go on the ballot?
It has, it went on the ballot two years ago and passed.
Three years ago.
Three years ago, was it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, twenty.
It's been kicking around for a while.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of talking about a lease agreement and also land acquisition?
A motion, motion to go into executive?
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about whether we should go into executive session? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion to go into executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
The public.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we turn?
Oh, I'll do it.
Turn again HBO.
Oh, I'm sorry, you all right?
Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Aye, yes.
Second.
Second. Those in, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are out of executive session and back into the regular meeting. The second part of the public portion is now open.
Two good comments. I'm very impressed by the programming at this library and the outreach to the different segments of this community. The Wachung Library thing was very interesting because there were signs out that Somerset wanted to close that. So any relationship with Somerset County Library, I wouldn't want my breath about because the former director of Val Rupus now, the head branch had it, Wachung. So I don't know what's going on there, but that was curious to me. But I think the, overall, the finances and everything, you keep us from calming us down a little bit. But the, I remain very impressed with the outreach, the attempts to reach out to the different parts of this community. So I'm grateful to January and this board for their
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for telling us.
Good to know.
Is there any other public? Seeing none. Our next meeting will be February 26th at 5:45 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn? NBC?
Second.
Ed? Second.
That's who's both guys.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the board. We had 100% attendance today.
If I was in school, we would get a pizza party.